Good morning, ladies and gentlemen. Today is Monday, August 5th, 2019. Commissioners' Court is meeting in regular open session. Would you please rise and join us for the Pledge of Allegiance, followed by a comment from the county judge?
(Inaudible)
You know, due to the circumstances, we will be trying to streamline our agenda, but one thing for sure, we need right now is to celebrate the positive things that have happened and will keep happening in our community. You know, this is a very difficult time for our community, but we have an outstanding community that has been, just done an incredible job of coming together. You know, I want to make sure that everybody understands that our commissioners and myself are very strong and very strong advocates of pulling and unity in our community, so we thank you for being here today. We also thank you for all the county employees. Sometimes it's not understood, but UMC, Children's Hospital, our Sheriff's Department, our medical examiners, all our county, it has taken an incredible role, and an immediate role, just the excitement, and I'm so glad to have the Children's Hospital here today. We'll talk a little bit about the resolution and everything that they've done. So, in honor of the victims and their families, for our community, I would like to take a moment of silence on their behalf. Thank you very much.
Item number four is the consent agenda composed of items 4A through 4O. For item 4A, we do have a correction to read in. Item 4A should read, approve the minutes of the special meetings of July 18, 2019, July 25, 2019, and July 30, 2019. Are there any other items that members of the court or public would like to pull for individual discussion?
Commissioners?
Make motion to accept along with the correction.
Second?
Commissioner Perez?
Aye.
Commissioner Leon?
Aye.
Commissioner Stout?
Aye.
Commissioner Robinson?
Aye.
Judge Sanmaniego?
Aye.
Motion carries. Item 5A resolutions. Approve and adopt a resolution recognizing El Paso Rage FC girls soccer team.
Good morning, judges and commissioners. I have the honor of reading this resolution. I'm happy to see that we have a number of members of the Rage FC girls soccer team in the audience, as well as our coach. So, as I read the resolution, can you come up to the podium, coach, with your team, and we'll hear from you after I read the resolution, and then you can start walking up now. So, whereas El Paso's Rage FC girls soccer team made history by being the first team from El Paso to qualify for the US Youth Soccer National President's Cup by winning the regional tournament in Round Rock, Texas, and whereas Rage FC is made up of soccer players from all across El Paso and Las Cruces and perfectly serves as a reminder of the unity, spirit of collaboration, and genuine excitement for teamwork that exists within the greater El Paso region, and whereas Rage FC won all five of the games they played throughout the five-day tournament against teams from South Carolina, Georgia, Tennessee, and Texas, clearly demonstrating that they are a force to be reckoned with, and whereas Rage FC serves as a great example of El Paso grit and determination, demonstrating that with hard work, collaboration, and a bit of luck, anything is possible. Now therefore be it resolved that the El Paso County Judge and Commissioners' Court recognize El Paso's Rage FC for their sweep at the regional tournament, their spirit of dedication to the global sport of soccer, and for representing El Paso County exceptionally well nationally. Signed this 5th day of August, 2019, the Honorable County Commissioners' Court.
Second?
Commissioner Perez?
Aye.
Commissioner Leon?
Aye.
Commissioner Stout?
Aye.
Commissioner Robinson?
Aye.
Judge Sanmaniego?
Aye.
Motion carries.
The floor is yours, Coach.
Just one other thing I want to say about not just the regional, they are now national champions as well, as regional champions, and each one of these girls represent 10 different high schools throughout El Paso. It's really a tough time for us too, because for us to get to nationals and to regionals, we were one of those teams that had to stay outside and fundraise that went, you know, one of our girls' clubs teams that went through a hard time this weekend, so basically, all of us want to thank all of our law enforcement and first responders that were there, because they probably saved a lot more lives, and for us girls that have been there, and for our parents, we really want to thank all those people, and I have here with me some of the girls, we have Bianca Chacon, which is from Franklin High School, she was our MVP, she was also the golden boot coming out of national, Sidney was one of the top 11 best players, along with Bianca and Jessica Ankley, the top 11 from the nation, so it was, it's a big accomplishment, and especially for these being girls from El Paso, Texas, representing 915. We wish it was a little, you know, more positive day, but you know, it is what it is, and we're going to stay strong, and we're going to come together as a community, and as 915, and we're here, you know, and congratulations to these girls, I mean, they did it, not me.
Well, congratulations again, Coach, and to...
She's going to speak.
Okay, we're going to hear, okay? That's fine.
Okay, well, first of all, I just want to say thank you for taking your time and like, making us proud, for making us even prouder, and like, recognizing us in El Paso, and I mean, this week was hard even for me. Soccer players, the soccer guy was lost, and it hurts like, in the heart, and I think my next season is for all the people that are dead, and for the people that were injured, and I mean, I think I'm talking for all of us. Our next season is for them, for the rest of my life, I'll play for them, and, well, thank you again for recognizing us.
Commissioner Stout?
Thank you, thank you for having the courage to come up and share those words with us. You know, this is something that's affecting all of us, and it's very obvious that this is a very close-knit community, and everybody cares for the victims and their family, and you know, it's tough, because we're here recognizing you all, and you all have done something great for this community, and have really made us very proud, and you should be proud of yourselves, and it's a very tough time right now, but we still have to celebrate you, and we will continue to celebrate the lives of the people that were affected in this tragedy, and you know, it's a very noble and amazing gesture of yours to say that you're going to dedicate your next season and how you play in the future to these folks. I would venture to say that the families are probably very thankful for that.
Yeah, and thank you very much. We've been, I was with Commissioner Leon at Sports Park yesterday, and the same thing, the community, the sports community of El Paso is just so incredible, and you know, you have to remember, I mean, don't make it a heavy thing on you, but the youth of our community are going to be the outcome of what happened these past few days, because you will create that strength going forward, you will be our future, and we want that future to be amongst youth that are strong like you, that have given national recognition to our community, that reflect who we really are, and we have to do everything possible to reflect this beautiful, amazing community, and we all know the sports in El Paso is like, one word, I mean, it's like, we have some of the most incredible athletes, and I wanted to ask you for a favor, and that is, if you guys could stay, typically, we move out, I think I'm going to make it mandatory that if you come for a resolution, you have to hear all three resolutions or four, because we have some amazing things coming up in the resolutions, and I would love for you to stay here and hear the other resolutions, and so thank you very much, each and every one of you, and the friends that have been, if you could convey from Commissioners' Court, each one of the commissioners, it's been heavy laden on us, if you could convey to all the families, you know, are concerned, but the fact that we're here to support everything that happens in the next month, next six months, like we say, it's not, something is going to go away six months, six months, it's going to be eight, you know, years before we were able to establish ourselves, but once again, El Paso strong, thank you so much.
So, can you all come up to the microphone and say your name and your position, and then, after you do that, and if you scored any goals, I don't know, and after that, come up and shake each one of our hands, and we'll give you the resolution.
Thank you, Coach.
Hi, my name is Daniela Gonzalez, and I'm a forward.
And also stick around here, because we want to take a picture with everybody.
I'm Destiny Winters, and I'm a defender.
I'm Nicole Valenzuela, and right wing.
Victoria Gonzalez, and I'm right wing as well.
My name's Jorge Yanez, and I'm a defender.
I'm Shandra Spina, I'm left wing.
I'm Allison Little, I'm a center mid.
I'm Cindy Varela, and I'm a forward, and scored goals.
I'm Felicity Randall, and I'm a center midfielder.
Karina Ortega, and I'm a goalkeeper.
Bianca Chacon, and I'm a forward.
Steve Donlea, I'm the head coach.
Item 5B. Approve and adopt a resolution recognizing August 6, 2019, as El Paso County Sheriff's Office National Night Out in El Paso County, Texas.
Resolution. Sheriff's Department, are you here?
I know you are. There they are.
Whereas National Night Out... Whereas National Night Out is a nationally recognized yearly event that raises the awareness to our crime prevention and unites the community. The El Paso County Sheriff's Office, in conjunction with other law enforcement agencies and businesses in the region, will host the county National Night Out. Yeah, I'm sorry. Anywhere as National Night Out is...
Sorry about that.
Is a unique crime drug prevention event, and has proven to be an effective, inexpensive, and enjoyable program to promote the neighborhood spirit and police community partnership and the fight to fight the safer community. And whereas National Night Out is a fun and enjoyable environment which promotes a positive spirit of creating effective partnerships with the local agencies and businesses, which sends a message to the crime, to criminals, I'm sorry.
I'm Commander Ryan Urutia, the Commander of Patrol Bureau for the Sheriff's Office. We would like to, of course, invite everybody out tomorrow night from 5:30 to 8:00 to Sheriff's Office Headquarters. The event will be at 3850 Justice. This event will have over 100 vendors, 100 booths, it'll have our local law enforcement agencies out there represented. I feel, at this point in our community, with the racially motivated attacks that took place this weekend, this is a perfect way to show we're unified. Law enforcement is committed to protecting and serving the public, that you put us in place to do that, and we appreciate you, and we would like for you to come out, join us, and show that you support us and we support you.
Well, did you wanna say something?
Commissioner Roberts?
Well, I would like to say firsthand, sorry about disturbing, but the fact that you guys do outstanding job all the time, this, in light of what happened, as the judge and others have already indicated, in light of what happened here, unfortunately, sad thing, but this is an opportunity, and you say now is the time. Now is the time to get out and meet your neighbors, know who your neighbors are, to promote that bonding, for more fellowship, and the fact that when we have someone from the outside come in our community, we recognize who they are and what they're all about, and that they're not have the best interests of El Paso in mind. So we wanna make sure that we support our law enforcement officers, so this is not an opportunity where you say, well, if I go out there and see the law enforcement guys, they may wanna bust me. No, this is a community event where we all get to know who we are, and it's all about friendship and community policing.
Yes, and what the public, we're members of this community as well. Not only we law enforcement officers, we're members of this community, and our best interests, our interests are the best interests of this community, our families, your families, so we would appreciate if everybody can make it out tomorrow.
Commissioner Leon, I know you have some words from...
Absolutely. Commander, you're absolutely right. When we talk about whether it's detention officers, deputies, police officers, federal agents, especially in our local area, it's not like the agents, the police officers, the deputies, the detention officer were brought in from another location. You are our neighbors. The public is the police, the police is the public, and this is something that is so near to my heart, because as the Commissioner said, we get to know who our police officers are, our neighbors, and as you all saw right now, the tremendous support that law enforcement and first responders have in this community, and it's been like that for years and years, and that's one of the facets that makes us so safe in El Paso. So, thank you for your service.
You know, I can tell you the number of people that have come up to me and made comments about dealing with the Sheriff's Department. It is such an honor for each one of us, as Commissioners and myself, as County Judge, to hear these compliments. For example, at 4th of July, which, I mean, I didn't have my camera sort of left it, but Commissioner Leon and Commissioner Robinson, we saw you not acting as police officers only, but talking to the children, helping out, blowing balloons, I mean, it was just an amazing... So I thank you so much for the honor that you have brought upon us by the way you conduct yourselves, and also by the coordination that you guys have. We heard some great compliments about other communities being fragmented and not working with other agencies, but you are open to work with other agencies, and whether it's Border Patrol or Highway Patrol, it doesn't matter, you guys have done just an incredible job. So thank you for making us so proud. Thank you.
Thank you, Judge. Thank you, Coach.
Item 5C. Approve and adopt a resolution declaring the month of August 2019 as El Paso Children's Hospital Pediatric Neurosurgery Awareness Month in El Paso County, Texas.
Well, given the circumstances, this is quite an honor for me to present this resolution. Whereas El Paso Children's Hospital provides the highest level of pediatric care in West Texas and Southern New Mexico, in less than a decade, El Paso Children's Hospital has successfully decreased the need for kids to travel outside of the region for pediatric specialties and surgical care for a staggering 80% by creating new service lines and recruiting subspecialty physicians. And whereas Dr. David F. Jimenez, doubly board-certified pediatric and adult neurosurgeon, has joined the El Paso Children's Hospital team. Dr. Jimenez is internationally recognized for developing the endoscopic assisted cranial... These are very sophisticated words here. Cranial comedy, more than two dates, you could repeat those when you get here, doctors. Two days ago, has been honored by America's top doctors, best doctors in America, among many others. He dedicates his career to the training of the next generation of neurosurgeons, and has been caring for families locally and from around the world for more than 30 years. And whereas our pediatric neurosurgery program provides comprehensive treatment and care of children with nearly every childhood brain, skull, spinal cord, and nervous system conditions. And whereas Dr. Jimenez has just authored and edited a book on neurosurgical endoscopy, he has written and presented his almost 30 years of experience treating brain conditions using minimally invasive techniques. Now therefore, be it resolved that the El Paso County Judge and Commissioners Court do hereby declare the month of August 2019 as El Paso Children's Hospital Pediatric Neurosurgery Awareness Month. Signed this 5th day of August 2019.
Second?
Commissioner Perez?
Aye.
Commissioner Leon?
Aye.
Commissioner Stout?
Aye.
Commissioner Robinson?
Aye.
Judge Samaniego?
Aye.
Motion carries.
With Cindy, Dr. Jimenez, and the rest of the team, Taylor?
Good morning, Judge and Commissioners. I wanna first start off by thanking each and every one of you. While I know that this last weekend was a trying weekend, however, as leaders to include you all, we really showed the strength of the hospital district, as well as the community at large, and I wanna take a moment to thank all of our physicians at El Paso Children's Hospital, University Medical Center, Texas Tech, our community physicians, as well as the hospital team at Delsol Medical Center, and all of our first responders for doing a phenomenal job of taking care of our family and friends and all the citizens of El Paso County. I'd like to turn our attention, though, to some of the positive aspects that we are seeing, especially taking care of the children within our community. Standing with me today to help bring awareness to pediatric neurosurgery are some of our amazing physicians and our team members, as well as one of our families that we've had the honor of taking care of. Since opening in 2012, El Paso Children's Hospital has been a part of over 100,000 children's lives, providing round-the-clock pediatric care in West Texas and Southern New Mexico. Before the hospital's inception, approximately 650 pediatric patients would leave our area for treatment, going to other Texas cities, placing further stress on them, as well as their families. But thankfully, those days are a distant memory. Since the opening of El Paso Children's Hospital, we've been able to decrease the number of children leaving our community by close to 85%. We continue to make sure that our children receive the highest level of care. One of those programs that we are very committed to is our neurosciences program. So we're excited that we're able to share with you all today our only board-certified pediatric neurosurgeon available to the El Paso and surrounding community, and we couldn't be more excited for the future of healthcare here in El Paso. I would like to ask Dr. David Jimenez to share a few words with you.
Thank you, Cindy.
Thank you, Cindy. Judge Samaniego, Commissioners Perez, Leon, Stout, and Robinson, it is really an honor for me to be here to serve this wonderful community. I'm very well aware of the need of this, of these services in this community. For a number of years, I haven't worked in San Antonio and seen the effects of it. Credit must be given to Cindy Stout and the leadership of the Children's Hospital who recognized that need and had put the resources to bring me here to provide those services. So I hope to be here for a very long time, continuing to take care of this wonderful community, and thank you for this recognition.
Thank you, Dr. Jimenez.
I would like to ask Mr. Smith, as well as his son Parker, to come up and to share their story real briefly.
Thank you.
Good morning. My name is Tyler Smith, and this handsome young man next to me is Parker, my son. I am forever indebted to El Paso Children's Hospital and Dr. Jimenez, because they saved my son's life. I'm already getting teary, sorry. A little over two months, a little less than two months ago, Parker hit his head while going down a water slide at camp, and while he's done that slide 1,000 times, that one time, he hit his head just right, and when he came out, luckily his mother was there, cared to him, and saw the urgency when he, excuse me, when he couldn't remember what happened, nor the events of the morning. So we went to his pediatrician, did all the normal, follow my finger, squeeze my hand, wiggle your toes, and he did fine. Luckily, they had the insight to say, I think you should go to CT scan. So we went to El Paso Children's, were greeted by a team of wonderful doctors and nurses, and the tone instantly changed when the results of the CT scan showed that he had a bleed in his brain. And it, just like that, the team snapped into place, and doctors were swarming, nurses were swarming, and I could tell he was in good hands. My understanding was that Dr. Jimenez was just about to finish his shift when he was still at the hospital, and greeted me in the hall, answered my questions, and looked me in the eye and said, I will take care of your son. Needless to say, the next hour and 24 minutes were the longest of my life. In the waiting room, the nurse came and said, surgery went great. Shortly thereafter, Dr. Jimenez came in and said, your son is fine, it was textbook, he's gonna be great. He spoke to my wife and I with respect and calming, and just gentle voice was just what we needed. And the next three days in ICU were unnerving, to say the least. The doctors and nurses in the pediatric ICU at El Paso Children's were phenomenal. Since then, Parker has been making a perfect recovery. He's back to reading, playing tennis, watching YouTube, fighting with his brother, doing all the things that he's supposed to do. And El Paso is lucky and proud to have Dr. Jimenez be a part of our community. So to Dr. Jimenez and pediatric ICU nurses and staff and all of El Paso Children's, I'd like to say thank you.
My goodness, what a beautiful story, Parker. Thank you so much for your bravery, and I'm so glad you're back to fighting and back to all these things that children should be doing. And that's really, really your motto, right, Cindy, is get them back to being children as fast as you can, and that's what it's all about. And, you know, we can be so proud of the Children's Hospital, you know, what they had to go through and where they are now is just an amazing feat, and people like Taylor and others that I have met have just been incredible. So thank you for being here. It's so appropriate, you know, we were there at UMC when the crisis hit, and Cindy and her team were there, and every doctor was just, they had to ask them to go home, because everybody came up and decided they were there to help. And as we said, it's gonna be a long week, so go back, rest, and come back again, but they showed that kind of energy that we have as a community. Dr. Jimenez, it's such an honor, you know, and I said just kiddingly, I'm so glad that we stole you away from San Antonio.
Me too.
Thank you for being in our community. We are a much better community because of your presence, and thank you for that national, also, that national limelight that you play. So thank you, each and every one of you, for everything that you do to make us proud. Thank you so much.
You should not be.
Yeah, I think so, yes.
Thank you, Judge. Item 5D. Approve and adopt a resolution recognizing Kayvon K. Dot James for being a six-time national champion amateur boxer, currently ranked number five in the United States.
Kaydot and family, thank you for being here. Also, my, one more sports story about our beautiful city, so let me begin my resolution. Whereas Kayvon K. Dot James is an incredible 11-year-old El Pasoan who is a six-time national champion amateur boxer, and is currently ranked number five in the nation in the bantam 11 to 12 years of age, 60-pound weight class. And whereas Kayvon loves boxing, began at the age of five, and at the age of eight, he began boxing competitively and quickly went on to win his first national title. And whereas since Kayvon has held number one ranking in all of the following weight divisions, 45 pounds, 50 pounds, and 55 pounds, he is currently being sponsored by Sting Sports and Impact Mouth Guards, both official sponsors of USA Boxing, and whereas when he is not training, Kayvon works to give back to the community, and has participated in the 16th Annual El Paso Community Thanksgiving Celebration, volunteered at the Downtown Syndrome Coalition of El Paso 2019 Spring Extravaganza, and has also taken the lead at various health fairs throughout the region to bring awareness to the importance of living the...
My goodness. What a beautiful story, Parker. Thank you so much for your bravery, and I'm so glad you're back to fighting and back to all these things that children should be doing. And that's really your motto, right, Cindy? Is get 'em back to being children as fast as you can, and that's what it's all about. And, you know, we can be so proud of the Children's Hospital, you know? What they had to go through and where they are now is just an amazing feat. And people like Taylor and others that I have met have just been incredible. So thank you for being here. It's so appropriate. You know, we were there at UMC when the crisis hit, and Cindy and her team were there, and every doctor was just... They had to ask them to go home, because everybody came up and decided they were there to help. And as we said, it's gonna be a long week, so go back, rest, and come back again. But they showed that kind of energy that we have as a community. Dr. Jimenez, it's such an honor, you know? And I said just kiddingly, "I'm so glad that we stole you away from San Antonio."
Me too.
Thank you for being in our community. We are a much better community because of your presence, and thank you for that national also, that national limelight that you play. So thank you each and every one of you for everything that you do to make us proud. Thank you so much.
Item 5D, approve and adopt a resolution recognizing Kayvon K. Dot James for being a six-time national champion amateur boxer, currently ranked number five in the United
Kaydot and family, thank you for being here. Also, one more sports story about our beautiful city. So let me begin the resolution. Whereas Kayvon K. Dot James is an incredible 11-year-old El Pasoan who is a six-time national champion amateur boxer and is currently ranked number five in the nation in the bantam 11 to 12-years-of-age, 60-pound weight class. And whereas Kayvon loves boxing, began at the age of five, and at the age of eight, he began boxing competitively and quickly went on to win his first national title. And whereas since Kayvon has held number-one ranking in all of the following weight divisions, 45 pounds, 50 pounds, and 55 pounds, he is currently being sponsored by Sting Sports and Impact Mouth Guards, both official sponsors of USA Boxing. And whereas when he is not training, Kayvon works to give back to the community and has participated in the 16th Annual El Paso Community Thanksgiving Celebration, volunteered at the Downtown Syndrome Coalition of El Paso 2019 Spring Extravaganza, and has also taken the lead at various health fairs throughout the region to bring awareness to the importance of living a healthy lifestyle. And whereas he recently became the newest member of the Henry Armstrong Foundation's Positive Self-Image Psychology Mentoring Sports Youth Program, which is designated to build confidence in young people regardless of race, creed, or ethnicity, along with encouraging young minds to get an idea about their future and achieve their goals. And whereas El Paso is proud of Kayvon for his hard work and dedication and all that he has accomplished at such a young age, he is truly an inspiration for many of our youth today as he continues to pursue his dreams. Now therefore be it resolved that the El Paso County Judge and Commissioners Court recognizes Kayvon K. Dot James for being a six-time national champ amateur boxer, who is currently ranked number five in the United States. Signed this 5th day of August 2019.
Commissioner Perez.
Aye.
Commissioner Leon.
Aye.
Commissioner Stout.
Aye.
Commissioner Robinson.
Aye.
Judge Samaniego.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you.
First and foremost, want to just give all glory to God, who is the head of our household. Just pretty much, I don't know what to say about him, other than he is my son. We pretty much put everything in there, you know? It all, his passion for the sport of boxing came at the age of about two and a half, three years old, when my oldest daughter was watching Rocky. And when I came home from work that day, he was like, "Dad, I watched this boxing movie called Rocky." And I was like, "Oh, that's cool." I was like, "Which one did you watch?" He was like, "I don't know." And I'm like, he was like, "I just know it was like some weird black guy with a weird haircut and Hulk Hogan in it," because he was a wrestling fan. So I told him, "Well, that's part three. You need to watch part four. You know, that's the one that everybody loves with Ivan Drago." So I showed him that one, and after that, he just, the passion ran in him. He would get up every morning, and he would say, "Dad, can I watch Rocky IV? Yeah, go ahead." So he'd watch it from the beginning, all the way until he went to Russia to train. And he would start reenacting everything Rocky was doing in the training. And I would be like, "Okay, it's something he liked." After he finished training, he would rewind it back to the beginning of the training and do it again. So I was just like, "Okay," you know? It was something he loved. He did that up until like four years old. In 2013, when Floyd Mayweather fought Robert Guerrero, it was May 4th. His birthday is actually May 6th. So me and my father-in-law are big, big boxing fans. So he watched it with us, and then after, he said, "Dad, I wanna box." And I looked at him and said, "You wanna what?" He said, "I wanna box. I at least wanna try it." So, you know, I teach my kids, always try, go for your goals. If you wanna try something, give it your all. So what I did was, I called my best friend growing up, Wesley Marcus. He's a boxing coach, that's what he does for a living. So I called him and said, "Hey, Wes, Kayvon just said he wants to box. You wanna train him?" He was like, "Yeah, I'll do it. When do you wanna start?" I said, "Well, you know what? He turns five on Monday. That'll be his birthday gift. We'll take him to the gym." Since then, he's been dedicated to training. He trains six days a week, three hours a day. And, I mean, his coach would tell me, "Man, your son's got it. He's got it. He's naturally talented." I'd look at him and say, "Man, you're saying that because you're my friend." You know? But then when he turned eight and he started competing, and I started seeing his skill level compared to some of the other kids, I said, "Man, God has blessed this kid with a gift." So at that point, I told my wife, "We gotta get behind him 100%. We've gotta dedicate our time to him, make sure he's in the gym, he's training, because I think if he continues to follow this, he could actually be El Paso's first male world champion in following Jennifer Han, the first female world champion." So I just push him every day and just tell him, you know, "Sky's the limit. It's all up to you. Never give up."
Well, thank you for being that kind of a father. Thank you so much for that. Wes, what about, do you wanna say a few words about?
Yeah, I'll be brief. Well, like his dad said, you know, the first time that he came into the gym, you know, he displayed hard work, dedication, focus, and maturity. You know, I got him in his stance, and he just was eye-to-eye with me, and everything I said, he did. And I know his dad didn't believe it, you know? His dad was just a boxing fan, but, you know, I have an eye for this, and I really believe that we have something special here with Kaydot. And, I mean, he's a good kid, good grades in school, he's very great attitude, you know? And like I said, he's very mature, very polite, and I'm just happy, you know, that I was able to train him. He's the one who actually taught. I never, this is a little bit off the subject, but I never wanted to have kids, and because of him, you know, now I got a little boy, and I love working with kids more, just because of him, you know? But, you know, I love working with him. It's easy to work with him, you know, because he comes in and he knows what he's gotta do. It's not like, "Hey, Kaydot, come on, let's go, let's go, Kaydot, let's go." No, I don't have to be after him. He knows what he's gotta do. Hard work, dedication is what he's made of, and I believe he will be a world champion one day. And what we're trying to do is make the Olympics, so in four more, or actually, five more years now, 2024, we're looking to go to the Olympics.
Thank you. How about you, Kaydot? Do you wanna say a few words?
I just wanna say, El Paso, thank you for supporting me, these other soccer teams, and all the sheriffs. And I wanna say, stay up, El Paso, stay fighting strong.
Just one other small thing. We do this everywhere we go, because people don't understand his dedication. We want him to show y'all what he's working with.
So we got a future president who's gonna be a national champion, right? That's a one-two punch. The President of the United States and a boxing national champion. We're heading the, "Thank you for being part of El Paso, and we're gonna keep up with your journey, and we're gonna support every step you go." Thank you so much. And both of you, thank you for that beautiful story. Thank you so much.
This is his hard work and dedication.
You wanna show the audience? Oh, my goodness. Well, thank you so much. This has been a beautiful thing, brought happiness to our heart in such a difficult situation. Thank you, Kaydot. This is a beautiful story.
We do have...
Those that, I know sometimes you guys have other things to do, so those that were here for the resolution, you're very welcome to leave. Have you got other activities? If not, we've got other presentations. It's all up to you, but thank you for being here.
Thank you so much.
Item number six is public comment. We do have four guests signed up to speak today. Our first guest we have signed up is Mr. James Perry.
Mr. Perry, come on down. Your turn.
How y'all doing today?
Very good, thank you.
I wrote a few things at home. I wanna tell the people in El Paso, my name is James Perry of El Paso, Texas. I moved to El Paso in 2005. I am an active, as a rodeo clown and world champion. I never in my life, I never in my 81 years would ever see all the violence in America, especially El Paso, Texas. My parents go out to all the families that was shopping at Walmart. I have called Walmart's home office to tell them to hire police officers to be at all Walmart stores in El Paso. We have a great police chief and a great sheriff in El Paso. I spoke to the people in El Paso to put metal detectors in all schools. As of today, there is none, and they have the money. I think the wrong people are running El Paso and the state of Texas to protect us. I urge all the citizens of El Paso that go out and eat to sit close to an exit. That means restaurants, football games at UTEP. The Police Department and Sheriff's Department should have a list of all persons entering and dismissed from mental hospitals in El Paso. Congress is doing nothing in America. It's time for them to go to work and protect us. I love El Paso. I carry the City of El Paso flag in the Fort Worth Rodeo Parade, the San Antonio Fiesta, and the Cotton Bowl in Dallas. Texas OU Weekend during John Cook, the mayor of El Paso. I am proud to be from El Paso, Texas. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Perry.
Our next guest we have signed up to speak is Mrs. Pam Ferroni.
For the record, my name is Pam Ferroni. Judge, Commissioners, and all who are within my hearing today, I am going to pray for El Paso. Feel free to join me if you so choose. If I did not need to be standing at the microphone right now, I would be on my face, crying out to the Lord. Almighty God, as we come before you today, our hearts are broken. Our beloved city has been violated. We mourn and grieve the loss of 20 precious souls. We ask you, Lord, to comfort all who mourn. Give them beauty for ashes, the oil of joy for mourning, and the garment of praise for the spirit of heaviness. We release and loose your healing for the 26 people who are in serious or critical condition. We pray that you will minister to every first responder who has been affected. Lord, we also pray for the families from Juarez and Mexico who have lost loved ones alongside their brothers and sisters in El Paso. The Lord is good, a stronghold in the day of trouble. He knows those who take refuge in Him. Let us take refuge in you, our loving Father. Pour out your love and healing to cover El Paso as we bind a spirit of death, fear, and trauma. Oh, Lord, there is no political solution for this problem. The issue is the condition of the hearts of men. El Paso is at a crossroads. We must choose how we respond to this tragedy that has been perpetrated upon our beloved El Paso. Yes, we are at a crossroads. Which road will we choose? Let us repent for walking in our own ways and doing what is right in our own sight. I call today for the fear of God to be released into the hearts of all El Pasoans, not the fear that says, "Do it right, or I will punish you," but the fear and reverence of a holy God who is longing for us to love Him and serve Him. Hosea 6 says, "Come, let us return to the Lord, for he is torn, but he will heal us; he is stricken, but he will bind us up." You have a purpose and destiny for El Paso, and we call for you to bring it to pass. Heal our land, Father, heal our land. Forgive our sin and heal our broken land. In the most holy and precious name of Jesus, the one who gave his life's blood and rose from the dead that we might receive him and have everlasting life. Amen, and so be it.
The next speaker we have signed up is Mr. Stephen Strummer.
Good morning.
Morning.
Good morning.
I wanna change my topic drastically, because I know we're all grieving after the events of Saturday. I thanked the previous speaker for her comments. But I feel that a time like this, these were events that I fervently did not want to happen. But I'm thankful for the movie Frontierland. It was about Tornillo, Texas. And it's a great thing to see, because I get to be inspired by the football team, even though they've lost and lost and lost. They fought courageously against the team from Ciudad Juarez. And it wasn't the score of the game. They lost 6 to like 26, but it was that they're football brothers, and that no wall can stop them from being brothers. To me, that is very inspiring. It's not a regular game, it's a scrimmage, but I love it. I need that. I need to know about Tornillo. I've been wanting to know about that community, 4,000, 5,000 people. And the major emphasis center of the community is the school system. I love it. This makes El Paso. This makes my life richer, because I know we will be richer from what occurred Saturday. We will go stronger. We will be El Pasoans. We'll think about Kaydot and the El Paso rage, 915 team. We will grow. We will grow richer, stronger, and yes, we will still be El Paso.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Steve. Mr. Strummer, thank you.
The last speaker we have signed up to speak is Mr. Pierre Andre Uzarga.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Good morning.
A lot of people are wondering how we address what happened this past weekend. It happened, we had a double dip, and it was racial. Patrick, I wish I could have a few minutes with you. As president, as a future president, I advise the DA, don't go after an execution. Don't go after a death penalty. You lash him several times, once for every victim. And not just one set, but you do it two or three sets, and you have the victims go, and you televise the discipline that we should have. If what I heard on the news is true about condemning Hispanics, you're gonna be in a world of hurt, because Hispanics is a majority population, respectively. Who do you think is the majority on the inside? So to the victims, don't worry, his world. So to the victims, don't worry, his, his world is now full of pain, but he has to remorse. And a physical lashing, getting old school, so to say, on the, on the violent criminals of this world is what we have to resort to. It's what we have to adapt and adopt. That's why I put together the Sixth and Seventh Act of my campaign plan. And it would work. The disciplinary action behind these and instilling the military discipline behind it, meshing it. You're going to have a lot of troubled men walk a little bit taller. They're going to think twice about reacting in a negative fashion. I don't care if you're black, white, brown, yellow, purple. It doesn't matter. Here in this nation, we're supposed to be respecting one another. My first act, my first promise eliminates a lot of the racial barriers, gender barriers, ethnicity barriers. Political ideas are now streamlined. We are a corporation, the United States of America is a corporation. My first act redefines the corporation. It strengthens it. We have a president and chair, myself, forty-six, as an American. Blue or red, it doesn't matter. We're American. And we solidify the office, the executive office, with a board of directors who are ex-presidents, ex-vice presidents, people who have diplomatic experience. Now, I understand that Donald Trump and Barack Obama and George Bush and Bill Clinton and Jimmy Carter have soiled the American name, have soiled the United States of America. But it's okay. We could come together and be like, hey, you know what? As gentlemen, I shake your hand. I messed up. Let's move forward. We're messing up right now as a country. How do you fix it? You put a Hispanic president in the office of, of the executive office. Let me streamline Congress. I don't have my suit on, forgive me. I think I have our groom's suit. But maybe with some contribution, some understanding from my local government, from the voters, I can address Congress with better attire. The judicial system, same thing. You unify the judges, Your Honor. The attorneys, legislators come together. I guarantee you, just the titles that I've given you and the, and the ideas that you're thinking behind, it's self-explanatory. By January twentieth, twenty-twenty-one, I want to sign the first act from November, my election date. And don't worry about how, that's my concern. I'm not a fool. I'm not. This is my actions. Lack of actions speak loud as well. The seven acts, I guarantee you, will work. Will solve a lot of our problems as Americans as that diversification eliminates.
Time.
Vote me. Put your trust in me. Until next time, Your Honor. Good day, and God bless America.
Thank you. Thank you.
We do have one more guest signed up to speak, Mr. Rene Fierro.
Good morning. Thank you for allowing me to speak today. I decided to speak. I didn't come here for this purpose, but I saw that there was a meeting, so I stopped to hear what was going on. And I thought maybe it would be a good opportunity to speak to the commissioners and to the county judge. I, I have some ideas that I would like to present to some of you all that I, I intend to schedule meetings so that I can kind of lay out what my ideas are, why I think it's beneficial to you politically, why it's beneficial to our community overall. I think part of, one of the things that, that I feel like I need to schedule these meetings and, and bring these ideas to you is in part due to what happened this last weekend, which is very sad. And I feel like this would be something that could bring the community together on a very, very large schedule, scale and, and bring happiness. And, and it's also due to, I, I see another issue that's fragmented the community having to do with downtown development and the building, the arena. And I think this idea helps to resolve that in a way that probably would be happy or that would make most people happy. And I think it's a legitimate solution, and it's a way for the county to, to be involved. I know the county is already moving forward or would like to move forward with the historic designation. And this would give Mountain Star Sports Group and the city alternatives, I think, to look at so that, so that they can move forward with their own projects. And so I don't really want to go into detail at this time, but I just wanted to introduce myself. My name is Rene Fierro firsthand. I, I don't want necessarily for this to be a public aspect of call at this point. Like I said, it's very preliminary. I just want to present these ideas and allow you since, as commissioners, you have more authority, you have more means to look into it and to determine how feasible it is. But, but I, I hope you will give it consideration. And, and hopefully, you know, if, if everything were to work the way I, I see it happening, I think it would be great for El Paso. So I look forward to meeting with all of you individually. Or if you think that we might be able to do that, you know, in one or two, groups of one or two people, then that might also help maybe be more expedient. But thank you again for allowing me to speak this morning. I look forward to discussing this more with you. And God, God bless you and be with you as, as you represent our community in the near future. And I'm sure there's going to be lots of, lots, lots of work for you to do and lots of questions that you'll be answered. So I give, I hope you have the strength to, to carry on with your duties. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Fierro.
Item number seven, A, presentation. Receive a presentation and discuss the monthly report from the Council of Judges. We ask for this item to be deleted from the agenda.
So moved.
Second.
Was there a second?
Yes, I did.
Thank you. Commissioner Betis has stepped out. Commissioner Leon?
Aye.
Commissioner Stout?
Aye.
Commissioner Robinson?
Aye.
Judge Samaniego?
Aye.
Motion carries. Item seven, B. Receive a presentation from the El Paso Central Appraisal District on the County of El Paso two thousand nineteen certified appraisal rule. We also would like a motion to delete this item.
So moved.
Second.
Commissioner Leon?
Aye.
Commissioner Stout?
Aye.
Commissioner Robinson?
Aye.
Judge Samaniego?
Aye.
Motion carries. Item number eight, auditor. Postpone July twenty-nine, two thousand nineteen pursuant to Texas Government Code Title X, Section two-two-five-six-point-zero-zero-three. Please accept the attached investment report for the third quarter and nine months ended June thirtieth, two thousand nineteen. We also would like a motion to delete this item.
So moved.
Okay.
Commissioner Leon?
Aye.
Commissioner Stout?
Aye.
Commissioner Robinson?
Aye.
Judge Samaniego?
Aye.
Motion carries. Item number nine, county and district clerk. Conduct a public hearing to consider the district clerk's plan for the preservation and restoration of the district court records, archives, and adoption of a ten-dollar district court records archive fee pursuant to Texas Government Code, Section five-one-point-three-zero-five. Can we have a motion to conduct the public hearing?
So moved.
Second.
Commissioner Betis?
Aye.
Commissioner Leon?
Aye.
Commissioner Stout?
Aye.
Commissioner Robinson?
Aye.
Judge Samaniego?
Aye.
Motion carries.
If there's anybody here at the public that would like to speak on this item, it's item number nine regarding the district clerk's records, archives, and adoption of the ten-dollar fee. They may do so now. Okay? Nope. Judge, at this time, if there's nobody that is here to speak on that item, you may go ahead and, and make a motion to close the public hearing.
Okay, so moved.
Second.
Commissioner Betis?
Aye.
Commissioner Leon?
Aye.
Commissioner Stout?
Aye.
Commissioner Robinson?
Aye.
Judge Samaniego?
Aye.
Motion carries. Item number ten. Approve and authorize the district clerk's proposed plan for the preservation and restoration of the district court records, archives, and the adoption of a ten-dollar district court records, archives fee pursuant to Texas Government Code, Section five-one-point-three-zero-five and Senate Bill six-five-eight of the eighty-sixth of Texas Legislature.
Good morning, Judge, commissioners.
Good morning.
This is not a new fee. This is a fee that was set up in the past legislature. It was going to go from ten dollars down to five dollars. The County and District Clerk Association of Texas worked very hard to ensure that the past legislation was going to bring the ten-dollar fee down to five dollars effective September first of this year. So due diligence by the association, I'm very proud to say I am part of. We lobbied and worked very hard. Our delegation, El Paso delegation, was equally supportive and behind making sure that this did not happen. It is a district clerk technology fee for records and archives. And through the diligence and hard work, the particular bill, SB six-eighty-five, was changed to keep that ten-dollar fee on a permanent basis. And so I am here asking for your authorization to continue with that ten-dollar fee that is attached to every motion, any case that is filed with the district clerk's office.
Commissioners? Commissioner Robinson?
Does this fee, this assess, that is dedicated only to that area?
To the district clerk technology fee for records, management, and archives. Specifically for that. And, and that is a fee that is also monitored by our county auditor and budget and fiscal.
Okay, so there cannot be any deviations?
No, sir.
Okay.
Make a motion to keep this, keep those fees at ten dollars as described by our county, our district clerk.
Yes, in accordance to Senate Bill six-fifty-eight.
Commissioner Betis?
Aye.
Commissioner Leon?
Aye.
Commissioner Stout?
Aye.
Commissioner Robinson?
Aye.
Judge Samaniego?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you.
Item number eleven. Approve and record into the commissioners' court meeting minutes the district clerk's certificate of the, of the district judge's order to approve the county auditor's budget for fiscal year two thousand twenty pursuant to Texas Local Government Code eighty-four-point-zero-two-one, eighty-four-point-nine-zero-one, one-one-one-point-zero-four-four, one-five-two-point-zero-three-one, one-five-two-point-zero-three-two, one-five-two-point-zero-three-four, and one-five-two-point-nine-zero-five.
That's a lot of statutes to cite, but they're all equally important. The council of judges, more so the district judges, that have jurisdiction in the county auditor and his assistant salaries have signed an order. It's, it's all in your backup. It is to keep the current salaries for the county auditor, the certification and appointment of him and sixty-seven assistant auditors, including one unfunded full-time staff. And it has to do with their compensation and their budget. And the auditor can answer more questions if you all have questions.
Mr. Dion, any comments?
Judge, commissioners, yes, our, our budget, we worked with the, the county, went through the normal protocol submitting our, our budget, went through the HR process for employees. We had two vacant positions that we requested about three years ago. One of those positions, we understand the county's holding the line on their budget, but we had one position, which was an IT, internal audit position, that we really felt we, we needed. We went through the county process. We had meetings with HR. Our recommendation was that we needed to fill that position. That was our recommendation, and I certified that to the district judges. And they, they approved that we get the funded position for that one vacant position. We're going to leave the other position vacant because we understand the county's position on funding. But like I said, we went through the, the protocol that any other department would go through for justification. And I submitted that to the district judges, and they did approve it.
Pitsy, any additional comments?
Yes, sir. So I just want to clarify, Mr. Dion did submit the, the personnel request. It doesn't go through the same protocol other departments go through in full. They have the ability to fund, once he certifies his budget to the district judges and they approve it, it is not subject to the county's procedures that we apply to other departments. So we did receive the personnel request through the HR process, but we did not process it as we do others because we don't have a, we don't have any authority to deny if he's certified it to the district judges and they've, and they've approved his budget.
I'd just clarify that just slightly, that even though the district judges have the ultimate say-so, my office did follow protocol, did go to meetings, just like any other department, to justify our position, met with HR. So we, we have been following protocol with what county departments have to provide to the county. So I mean, we're, basically, we like to play ball with the county, and we're not, we're not trying to abuse our, you know, our ability to, to get this position. Like I said, it was three years ago we got this position approved. We kept it vacant, and this year we're asking for that one position to be funded. So thank you for your consideration.
Commissioners? Commissioner Robinson?
So what we're saying, that this is a statutory requirement?
Good morning, Christina Sanchez, Assistant County Attorney. There's provisions in the Local Government Code that provide, because the district court judges do supervise the auditor's office, that provide that if, once they review the budget that has been presented by the auditor and looked at it, they certify that. And then what happens next is, and then it gets presented to the commissioners' court for, for approval. And so absent anything that would be considered arbitrary or capricious, the commissioners' court is required to approve that budget. However, I just wanted to clarify for this particular item. What your, what the agenda item is for is to record into your minutes the certification by the county, excuse me, by the district court judges. That's what is being requested of you today. And so if you choose to do that, all you need to do is just do a motion to approve at this point.
Well, one key word that you said, you said required.
Yes, sir. Absent anything that is arbitrary or capricious and...
Well, fundamentally, I don't have a problem with it, except for the fact that it's just not what I'm accustomed to doing as far as a budget, you know, where, where all my dealings with the city, that we have budget, every department within our jurisdiction goes through the budget process. It's not anything that's separate, and it's not anything that's set to a requirement or, or required without any discussion and debate by, by the body, by elected body. Don't have.
Commissioner Betis?
And, you know, I just, I've said this in years past, and, and, you know, as I was going through the budget book this year, it's just, I, I hope at some point somebody, whether it be the council judges, takes a look again at the, the size of staff and, and the amount of budget as pertains to the auditor's office. I mean, it, it is one of the largest auditor's offices in Texas for, for a county of our size. I actually think, when I first was looking at it this budget year, the, the number of personnel and actually the size of the budget exceeds that of Bear County, you know, which is, which is a county that's twice our size. And, and that's just something that, you know, I, I think that the council, I hope the council judges, you know, takes a look at in, in the years ahead or, you know, during, during budget time.
And please note, Judge and commissioners, that my role here is as district clerk, I am the clerk of the courts, and I am required to bring this action, or this item, before you all. all.
I move to approve and record.
Commissioner Leon, you can.
Just a quick question, Betsy. When HR reviewed this along with Mr. Dion, what was their recommendation?
They recommended denial of the position, but noted that it was their understanding that council had already approved the position and that it would be forwarded to Commissioners' Court because we understand that it had already been approved by council.
And this was, that recommendation came in about three years ago or two years ago?
No, this was, he resubmitted it this year, and it was for the one internal auditor intermediate position. And the notice from HR, which was sent on July 15th, says it's recommended for denial. But that they understood that the council had already approved the position.
Thank you.
There's a motion by Commissioner Stout?
Well, as I understand, Christina, we have no choice. Right.
Right, and again, as the district clerk had mentioned, this is to record those minutes into your agenda. She's here to present that order as required by the statute.
Thank you. Second?
Commissioner Perez.
Aye.
Commissioner Leon.
Aye.
Commissioner Stout.
Aye.
Commissioner Robinson.
Aye.
Judge Samaniego.
Aye.
Motion carries.
And while I've done this time and time again coming before this podium, I don't know if it's just all of the emotions and all of the great resolutions, it was just such a feel-good, I didn't even introduce myself. I'm Norma Favela Barcelo, your district clerk. And so I should know that that's what I do first, but thank you all for your attention to the items.
Thank you for everything that you do behind the scenes most of the time. So thank you so much. Lots of work that goes into your department. Thank you.
Item number 12. Excuse me. Health and Social Services. Approve and authorize the county judge to sign the Area Agency on Aging of the Rio Grande Council of Governments vendor agreement that sets the unit rate for congregate and home-delivered meals for the county's nutrition program from October 1st, 2019 through September 30th, 2020. Contract number 2019-0496.
Good morning, County Judge, Commissioners. Irene Valenzuela, Community Services Department. Every year, our department engages in rate negotiation discussions with the Health and Human Services Commission to determine the rate at which they will reimburse each individual meal that we serve for our senior nutrition program. This year, the Health and Human Services determined that rate to be $5.28 for our congregate meal program, $4.70 for our homebound meal program. That is the rate that they're going to reimburse us for each meal setting beginning October 1st of the new fiscal year. The Area Agency on Aging, which funds primarily our congregate meal setting, is required to adopt this rate. Health and Human Services Commission reimburses us for our homebound meals. This item is requesting you to accept these rates so that at the beginning of the fiscal year, we can start receiving this reimbursement for our program.
Move to approve. Just, Commissioner Leon.
Irene, just for clarification, this does not mean that the individual seniors that eat at those locations have to pay that amount.
No, the program is free to the seniors participating. This is what they reimburse the county for paying for those meals.
You may have already said it, but I.
And I didn't. Thank you, sir, for requesting that clarification.
Second.
Commissioner Perez.
Aye.
Commissioner Leon.
Aye.
Commissioner Stout.
Aye.
Commissioner Robinson.
Aye.
Judge Samaniego.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you, Irene.
Item number 13, Human Resources. Pursuant to Chapter 157, Subchapter F of the Texas Local Government Code, hold a public hearing to receive comments on the restatement of the County of El Paso's Health and Dental Summary Plan Description for 2019. The county's Health and Dental Summary Plan Description was approved by the Risk Pool Board during their meeting on July 17, 2019. For this item.
I'm sorry, Jessica, just for the members of the court, we're going to be asking that all items from under the Human Resources Section 13 through 18 be deleted, and we will bring them back at the appropriate time. I do believe, Jessica, I do believe we have to read each one of them into the record. Christina stepped away, but I can verify that. If we're going to delete all items 13 through 18, do they have to read each one into the record?
Yes, we need them each read into the record because they are posted, and so we need to be able to record that.
Good luck.
Item number 14. Approve the restatement of the County of El Paso's Health and Dental Summary Plan Description for 2019. The county's Health and Dental Summary Plan Description was approved by the Risk Pool Board during their meeting on July 17, 2019. Funding is available in IS Health Dental Claims. Contract number 2019-0410.
What you all could do as well is you could read each of the items after, so you could read 14, all the rest of them, and then just the court do one motion to delete, and that would take care of all of them. But you need to read each one individually.
Okay.
Okay? Would the court like to do that?
Yes.
Yes? Okay.
Okay. So then, item 15. Discuss and take appropriate action to authorize the county to conduct a prevailing wait rate survey pursuant to Texas Government Code Section 2258.022 and to invite other El Paso County governmental entities, contractors, and subcontractors to participate. Funding is available in General Fund, G Admin, expense miscellaneous. Item number 16. Receive a presentation on the status of county ADA projects. Item number 17. Approve and authorize a revision to the County of El Paso's overpayments, underpayments, and repayment policy. Item number 18. Approve and authorize the revision to the County of El Paso's holiday leave policy. Can we have a motion to delete all those items?
The move.
Second?
Commissioner Perez.
Aye.
Commissioner Leon.
Aye.
Commissioner Stout.
Aye.
Commissioner Robinson.
Aye.
Judge Samaniego.
Aye.
Motion carries.
And just to clarify, those were for items 13 through 18.
Correct.
And Commissioners, we talked to Betsy that some of them could go into budget, the ones that we're deleting could go into our budget, and others not necessarily for next week so that we don't put everything next week. Some might be pushed a little further.
And then part of the suggestion would also be because these items were deleted, that to reach out to the departments?
Each department.
Yes, sir. So that they are notified so that they can put these items back on.
No, our department, well, we've worked out a process on how we're going to get them reposted.
Yeah. Thank you, Betsy, for that.
Item number 19, Public Works. Pursuant to Texas Local Government Code, Chapter 232.028G, Certification Regarding Compliance with Platt Requirements, approve and adopt an increase to the fee for the issuance of certificates of Platt compliance from $25 to $32 for properties located within the City of El Paso's extraterritorial jurisdiction, and $30 for all other properties in the unincorporated area. All fee increases shall be effective October 1st, 2019. This item, we are also asking for it to be deleted.
Motion to delete?
Second.
Commissioner Perez.
Aye.
Commissioner Leon.
Aye.
Commissioner Stout.
Aye.
Commissioner Robinson.
Aye.
Judge Samaniego.
Aye.
Motion carries. Item number 20, Purchasing. Approve and authorize the inter-agency transfer of surplus county vehicles to the Clint and Torneo Independent School Districts and the Clint Police Department for a total amount of $100 to be remitted to the County of El Paso. Funds to be deposited into a county general fund purchasing unclassified revenue.
Good morning, Deborah Crejo, County Purchasing Agent. In this case, we have received requests again to have the county donate vehicles, not only to Clint ISD, but to the Clint Police Department and Torneo ISD. I didn't know if you needed me to stop. In this case, each of them has offered an amount that the court has found acceptable in the past, and they do this because there are some things that need to be fixed on these vehicles. And so the amounts they have to offer, they like to offset that and use those for repair. And if the court finds this amenable, we would request that this be approved.
Motion to approve?
Judge, Commissioners, before you finish the vote, while Holly Hargrove from the Office of Budget and Fiscal Policy, I would ask that the account for consideration that these funds be deposited into be revised to the county CIP account. Typically, all auction proceeds, all sales proceeds from assets go into our Capital Improvement Fund for reinvestment.
I'll modify my motion to include what Mr. Hargrove just said.
Capital Project Fund 3001, thank you.
Judge, I have a question.
We'll make sure in the future that that's correct on our presentation.
Commissioner Robinson?
Question. How do we publicize this and do we offer to other entities within the county?
It is available to all agencies. Currently, we don't publicize per se, like with an advertisement, but when we first started out, it was one agency, so word of mouth has expanded it. And now we're also, Clint and Torneo do take advantage of it. And there's also one other I can't think of at this time. Canatio, yes.
Okay, well, that's really nice of you to ask this for, make sure that if we're doing this, I'd like to make sure that we have a fair process where it's open to everyone so no one have an excuse, say, well, I didn't know about it. You know, so it'd be some form of notification or publication there too. Because, you know, like, we've got Canatio, we've got Benton, we've got Westway, which is also a part of our county, and then they have needs as well.
It would be no problem for me to get a list of the agencies and just remind them that per our policy, we do this on a first-come, first-served basis. That's, you know, the order that the letters are received. If we have it, it's great. And then you guys get the chance to approve it based on what's offered. So yeah, that would be an easy thing to do.
Well, you say entities. These are communities, cities, villages within our county jurisdiction. So I'd like to make sure that all of the county jurisdictions, Clint is part of El Paso County, Benton is as well, so all those.
Correct.
Now, others, maybe subject to discussion, but I make sure that all of our entities within our jurisdiction be notified.
Our policy, I think, is specifically limited to El Paso County.
Okay, well, they're part of El Paso County.
Yeah. And so it would be very easy to notify the agencies within El Paso County. We can just put out a general broadcast to the cities and the school districts and just let them know that it, by our policy, it's first-come, first-served, and I can share the policy with them so they'll know exactly what to, what process to follow.
Okay. We have a motion already? Second?
We had a motion, we need a second.
A second.
Commissioner Perez.
Aye.
Commissioner Leon.
Aye.
Commissioner Stout.
Aye.
Commissioner Robinson.
Aye.
Judge Samaniego.
Aye.
Motion carries. Item number 21. Approve and authorize the two emergency preparedness, safety, and environmental truenarc equipment and supplies for West Texas Haida ISC using HGAC by contract EP11-17 awarded to Fisher Scientific of Palser, South Carolina in the amount of $60,378. Purchasing approved on July 25, 2019. Funding is available in SG O N D C P 2018 cap outlays.
Deborah Crejo, County Purchasing Agent. In this case, we're requesting the approval, as we do routinely, for the purchase of the two truenarks with the unlimited five-year warranty and the solution kit for this test. There's an attached spreadsheet that gives the details of everything included in this purchase and the approval by the sheriff's office.
Motion to approve?
Second.
Commissioner Perez.
Aye.
Commissioner Leon.
Aye.
Commissioner Stout.
Aye.
Commissioner Robinson.
Aye.
Judge Samaniego.
Aye.
Motion carries. Item number 22. Approve and authorize the purchase of seven transit buses for the County of El Paso using State of Oklahoma contract SW 797 awarded to Creative Bus Sales of Chino, California for a grand total amount of $858,172. Purchasing approved on August 1st, 2019. Funding is available in cap-out equipment and cap-out vehicles.
Deborah Crejo, County Purchasing Agent. In this case, if you remember last week, we came to you requesting an interlocal with the State of Oklahoma, and this was the purpose for that interlocal. Although now that we have it in place, there may be other attractive contracts we could take advantage of, this was a specific need the county has. We have members of Public Works and Fleet here to speak to the specific program this applies to. But in this case, you are authorizing us to use the State of Oklahoma's contract for these buses.
Motion to approve?
Second.
Commissioner Perez.
Aye.
Commissioner Leon.
Aye.
Commissioner Stout.
Aye.
Commissioner Robinson.
Aye.
Judge Samaniego.
Aye.
Motion carries. Item number 23. Pursuant to Texas Local Government Code, Section 262.024, approve and authorize the use of an exemption to purchasing procedures that allows a contract for the purchase of items necessary to preserve or protect the public safety of the residents of the county. Furthermore, approve and authorize the county judge to sign the off-site vehicle fueling agreement between the County of El Paso and Western Refining Southwest Inc., contract number 2019-0480.
Deborah Crejo, County Purchasing Agent. I want to give you a little bit of history on this briefly. The county and the city have always gone in together and used the same off-site fueling program. When the city went out for bid and awarded, unfortunately, we found out in the award stage that the vendor being awarded did not cover all the county's needs. There were some areas that our sheriff's department would have been underserved. And so since that contract didn't work, and we found out very late in the game, we were put into a situation where we needed to go out for bid. The bid is currently on the streets, there is competition occurring, and the fleet director Houghton Staple will be evaluating any responses received, and I think the close date is within the next couple of weeks. We want this six-month approval using the discretionary exemption found in 262024 because we feel that there is an immediate impact to safety if the sheriffs are forced to go out of their assigned area to fuel. And if you approve this, it is a defined time limit, and it is for a specific need. And when the new contract comes before you, this would naturally die.
Commissioner Leon?
I just have a quick question. Is Western Refining Southwest still a good name?
I believe so. That's the name.
I thought they'd gone to Marathon.
Did they? I think they were Marathon and it came.
No.
Good morning, Court. Houghton Staple Fleet Operations Director. The name still applies to the off-site fueling, the fuel card. It went from Western Refinery Endeavor Marathon, but the gas card program is still as it's written. And I just want to add, it's not just the sheriff's office that we had an issue with with the current vendor that the city is using. It also affects the entire West Annex, which is JP 7, Council of Precinct 7, the tax office, and our county warehouse off of County Road Avenue. There was no coverage within reasons. We don't want to drive 15 miles to fuel it up.
I think, second?
Sorry, was there a motion?
Yes.
Commissioner Robinson, you made the motion.
Thank you. Commissioner Perez.
Aye.
Commissioner Leon.
Aye.
Commissioner Stout.
Aye.
Commissioner Robinson.
Aye.
Judge Samaniego.
Aye.
Motion carries. Item number 24, Grant Applications. Approve the submission of county grant applications as listed and described. If awarded, all grant award agreements will be brought back to the Commissioners' Court for final acceptance and approval. Approve and authorize the county judge to sign the letter of intent and authorize the Community Services Department General Assistance Unit to apply for funds in a consolidated community grant application for the coordinated entry system to the Department of Housing and Urban Development Continuum of Care Homeless Assistance Program via the El Paso Coalition for Homeless. The grant request would be for $160,000 with a 25% match requirement in the amount of $40,000 to be met through existing resources and staff salaries.
Good morning, once again, Irene Valenzuela, Community Services Department. We are asking your consideration to approve us applying for this grant application through the Continuum of Care Program from the Housing and Urban Development Department. This is a grant that will be put together in a collaborative applicant for the entire community. The El Paso Coalition for the Homeless is responsible for submitting one complete application to HUD for funding that comes through our community. We are one piece of that request. Our request is $160,000. Our request is $160,000 to continue the coordinated entry system. We are currently operating it through our department. The Office of General Assistance is providing that service to this community, which is the one-door in for the homeless individuals and families who come and request assistance to be placed in housing. They go through the coordinated entry process. This funding will cover staff salaries for three assessors. We currently have those assessors right now funded through this grant. This grant is for an additional two more years. That will be, if funded, will be effective August 1, 2020. We are currently in the second year of the first grant that we applied for back in 2016.
Move to approve?
Second.
Commissioner Betis?
Aye.
Commissioner Leon?
Aye.
Commissioner Stout?
Aye.
Commissioner Robinson?
Aye.
Judge Sanmaniego?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you all.
Item number 25. We do have a correction to read in per the grant's division. Item number 25 should read, approve and authorize the El Paso County Sheriff's Office to submit an application for the fiscal year 2019 Edward Byrne Memorial Justice Assistance Grant Program local solicitation in the amount of $208,705. The grant funds will be split equally between the county and the city of El Paso to benefit the El Paso County Sheriff's Office, District Attorney's Office, and El Paso Police Department. The grant program period is from October 1, 2018, through September 30, 2022. There's no county match required.
Motion to accept?
Second.
Good morning, Judge. Good morning, Commissioners Isabel Hernandez from Budget and Fiscal Policy. As we've done in the past, the County of El Paso will be applying to the JAG or the Edward Byrne Grant Application. The local allocation is split evenly with the City of El Paso and the County of El Paso. And therefore, the beneficiaries are the El Paso Police Department and the El Paso County Sheriff's Office. The El Paso County Sheriff's Office shares 10% of its allocation with the DA's office. And the items requested will be for the paperless file system for the DA in the amount of $10,435. The El Paso Police Department will ask for portable handheld radios in the amount of $104,352. And the El Paso County Sheriff's Office request is for system improvements in the amount of $93,917. Your permission to apply would be greatly appreciated.
We have a motion and a second.
Commissioner Betis?
Aye.
Commissioner Leon?
I'm going to say aye, but I apologize for preempting you.
Aye.
Commissioner Stout has stepped out of the meeting. Commissioner Robinson?
Aye.
Judge Sanmaniego?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you so much.
Item number 26, Budget and Finance. Approve and authorize the capital improvement interim request for the Facilities Department for the purchase and installation of an HVAC system at the Youth Services Center. Further approve the reallocation of funding from the CP Improvement 01 Miscellaneous to CIP 19 Isleta Annex Cap.
Judge, Commissioners, I want to clarify something on this really quick. The reason why this wasn't part of our original capital request, they did submit, but it was a massive request to do all air conditioners, which exceeded our limit that we have under the CIP penny. However, what they're doing is they're replacing them, they're going to change their request to do a certain number per year. They do all need to be requested. We've had problems with this building since its inception. And that's a separate matter that we're pursuing as well. But we'd ask for your favorable consideration for the funding for this particular unit to be replaced.
Move to approve?
Second.
Commissioner Betis?
Aye.
Commissioner Leon?
Aye.
Commissioner Stout is absent. Commissioner Robinson?
Aye.
Judge Sanmaniego?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Item number 27. Approve Amendment Number 43 to the County of El Paso's 2018 through 2019 operating budget. This budgetary amendment will increase grants by $101,200, thus increasing the overall budget of $444,899,350.48 to $445,550.48.
Good afternoon, Judge and Commissioners. Wally Hargrove from the Office of Budget and Fiscal Policy. You received the backup for this week's budget amendment on Friday, and I was asking if there's any questions regarding this week's amendment.
Motion to approve?
Second.
Commissioner Betis?
Aye.
Commissioner Leon?
Aye.
Commissioner Robinson?
Aye.
Judge Sanmaniego?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you.
This now brings us into executive session. Commissioner's Court will recess into executive session to discuss items 28A through 28D pursuant to Texas Government Code Section 551.072 and 551.087. Commissioner's Court will reconvene to take official action.
Commissioners Court has reconvened into regular open session. Item number 29, approve and authorize the purchase of the property located in BET survey 126, 127, and 128 University Land. Further authorize County Judge and purchasing agent to execute the necessary documents for the purchase of the property. Contract number 2018-0898. I'm going to go ahead and read in the other two items that we'll be asking to be deleted as well. Item number 28B from executive session, discuss potential real estate property acquisition in the greater Horizon City area for revenue program, economic, and transportation development purposes pursuant to Texas government code section 551.072. Item number 28 from executive session, discuss the purchase of real property located in BET survey 126, 127, and 128 University Land pursuant to Texas government code section 551.072. For these three items, we are asking the court to delete.
The move.
Second.
Commissioner Perez.
Aye.
Commissioner Leon.
Aye.
Commissioner Stout.
Aye.
Commissioner Robinson.
Aye.
Judge Sanmaniego.
Aye.
Motion carries. And this concludes all the items on today's agenda for the regular meeting.
No action.
This concludes today's meeting at 12:06 PM.